Without further ado, our interruption, we will begin the State Board of Education Work Session, June 8, 2023.
Okay, well.
Dr. Mackey, it's according to my schedule that you start with your update.
Well, I, fortunately, the only person who has to be ready is Dr. Dennis Coe. He's sitting right there, ready. So coming up, Dr. Coe, I don't think he needs introduction to anybody, superintendent.
But the final day you give in the...
Superintendent in Dothen City, of course, he worked here. So he was superintendent in Henry County, and then he left to come to work at the department, and then was a private consultant for a while, and when Dothen, Dothen needed him, as they say, when mama calls, mama's not exactly Dothen, but he's from Dennis from that area of the state, and they really needed him to step in, and he came back to help them through a hard time, and stayed on as superintendent permanently, which meant a lot to me. He does a great job, and so when I called him last year or something, I guess, I don't know what I owe him, he's not turned the tab in yet, when I asked him if he would chair the science courses study, he said yes. So he's doing that work, and y'all have asked about us just getting kind of an update. The timeline, you know, these will come to you, these standards will come this fall, late fall, for adoption, or consideration, then adoption, and then we'll start the science textbooks next, probably around January, we'll start the textbook process for science to follow these standards, and then we will at the same time be doing social studies courses study. So I just bring that up as a reminder. Next year, we'll be doing social studies courses study and science textbooks, and that's the first time we've had two major core subjects overboped in a long, long time. So, so we're already thinking about preparing for that ahead of time. But the science courses study, about halfway through development, Dr. Coe, I'll just turn it over to you for whatever you want to mention, and then any questions from board members. You didn't bring it, there's no standards to look at today. This is about process and where we are in all the process, just to clarify for everybody.
Dr. Mackey, now I go back a long way.
We really did.
But he asked, I had reservations, and I'd always wondered how much he liked me, so now I really know.
We're not going to say which way it is, Mike.
So when he did this, I did, I did promise him that when I would come up and make presentations today, that I would keep this under two hours, so.
If we get up, leave for lunch, we keep going.
No, I, we won't keep you that long, so it's, you know, it's, it really means a lot to me as a 35-year educator, I'm also, I have a doctorate in education, but also have a master's degree in biology. So I spent my early years as an educator in the classroom, teaching biology and anatomy and physiology, and I understand the importance of the work that we're doing in establishing and developing updated courses study. So this is, as Dr. Mackey mentioned, this, this work is ongoing, we're not quite halfway through the, the process. We started in January, so we've had five meetings thus far, meeting, or two days a month, and so we've met for five months, now we'll meet later on this month. Typically, we meet closer to the first of the month, I think this coming month, but during June, we meet a little bit later this month, in July with the summer months. And so we do have five meetings under our belt thus far. As Dr. Mackey mentioned, our goal is to bring a proposal back to, to the board for your work session in November, and then hopefully if everything is suitable, you can ratify that at your actual meeting in December. And so very excited and pleased with the committee that, that we have working on this. There are 41 members of the, of the task force, science courses study committee, including myself. There are 11 teachers that are certified in grades K3 or K6, one of them's EL certified, four are certified in the air special education services, and one gifted certified. We have 10 teachers that are certified in grades six through 12 science, three of which are national board certified. We have six school administrators, and of those six, five of those have certifications in the science area. We have six university science faculty members, which includes one dean of education, and then we have seven governor appointees, three with expertise in science, there's one engineer, there's one cardiologist, and one with experience in government and policy. So these folks, I mean, these are Alabamians that adhere to and hold and share our values, they're not people that are brought in from outside looking in, so these are our people working on our standards, and they, they do tremendous work each month. To start out with, I think it's important for us to remember that each one of us as members, we, we all took a, an oath of office that pledged for us to commit to our duties and to affirm that none of us had any conflict of interest as we developed the standards, and we agreed to keep the proceedings of this process confidential, so trying to avoid any type of outside influence and just focusing, keeping that focus on what's best for the students of Alabama. The standards are divided into the following grade bands, we have grades K through 2, grades 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and grades 9 through 12. And we also look at the following subject areas. Elementary science is broken down into each grade, kindergarten through fifth grade. We have earth and space science, life science, physical science, biology, chemistry, environmental science, human anatomy and physiology, and physics. And so the, the big crux of our work entails us redesigning and looking at standards. And Ms. West and I had a conversation about standards earlier, and sometimes I know in the world that we live in, sometimes a lot of people get confused about standards and curriculum. We are not working on curriculum. Our, our job is to focus on standards, and that's, see, and I talked about, I, I use this with, with my folks back home, the analogy of football, you know, being a football state, everybody likes to talk about football, but when you look at football, a standard would be how long, how many yards does it take to get a first down? 10. You score a touchdown, how many points do you get? Six. An extra point, one point, field goals, three. Those are all standards. And so what you do at practice, whether it's offensive plays or defensive plays, those are your curriculum, but the standards, when you come to play, are the same for everybody. And so that's what we work on, and we use that, that focus and try to ensure our people that we're not here promoting a particular curriculum, we're here looking at the actual standards of what do we expect our students to know at the conclusion of a grade or a course. I know that the standard that a lot of us like to look at, and I guess the litmus test that we all use from time to time is, is the NATE, our National Report Card. So I think it's important to understand as far as science goes, in regard to the NATE, the current framework that NATE uses was developed and completed in 2005, and they implemented those, that, that framework in 2009. So we've had the, the current test, the NATE assessment that we take utilizes standards that were established and put in place in 2009. Those are going to be updated again in 2028. So the next time the, the courses study, science courses study committee meets, they will be looking at and referring to possibly different NATE framework than we're currently using. But we are looking at, as we review the, the course of study, we are looking at the NATE framework and how that would apply to us. We've also looked at top performing NATE states or NATE entities. One of those is the Department of Defense, their NATE scores are extremely high. We've looked at Wyoming, Massachusetts, Nebraska, Florida, Wisconsin, and North Dakota. We're also looking at the, the course of study for Utah, Minnesota, Mississippi, Georgia, Tennessee, and Texas. So we wanted to look not only at the high performing NATE states, but also look at surrounding states so we can compare what are folks in our region. So as we look at, at and make those comparisons, we are using that as, as kind of a, of a guide, but, but also recognizing that Alabama is unique, and we're not going to just copy straight from what any other state uses, we are going to make that specific to our state. We recognize too, in the process, and we've shared this with all of our committee members, there are unique circumstances that exist in Alabama and, and unique opportunities that we have. And so we, our committee members have been made aware of those things, and we, we've been made aware of any type of current legislation that may exist in Alabama that distinguishes us from other states, our committee members are aware of those, and as we develop standards, it will be done out of respect for the state board rules as well as existing legislation. So those things are being considered as we, as we move through with our work. I think it's important also to remember that the, the standards that are written are minimum standards, so each local board can add to the work that we're doing, what we're doing is, is the work at minimum. So this is, as I mentioned too, this is an ongoing work, so we still have several months to go. I believe it was August, is that right? It'll be August that we'll be putting this out for public comments, starting in August, so give opportunity for the public to weigh in on this. And I want to just say this, Kathy Jones has just been phenomenal organizing, and you know this, and the work that she does with courses study, the works, she, the organization and the, and the entire State Department staff, we've got numerous people within the department that act as facilitators, Kathy's heading that up and organizes that, and things move. It may look like it's, it's extreme organized chaos, and so we'll recognize Dr. Mackey as well, we've had several so committee meetings once a month, and he's been diligent about stopping in and making appearance there, and I know that's well appreciated with committee members, with him showing his interest in, in showing up for those subcommittee meetings as well. So I do want to thank those, they do an outstanding job of keeping this work moving, and with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Coe. All your questions from, would you, is there anybody else in the audience you'd like to recognize? We know that you're the, you're the lead dog and responsible person, but I know you have a cadre of support.
We have Kathy and Sean Stevens, anybody else here that's been working? I didn't see anybody else come in.
Our whole team. There are the, a great number of AMSCI staff members who are, are excellent in their subject knowledge and, and are excellent facilitators to bring about the discussions that need to take place during this meeting.
And we have, what, 12, about 11 or 12 facilitators, all of them aren't here today.
Probably the most important person is my administrative assistant, Holly Summerlin, because she has managed to get the paperwork through in record time, so I, she has been the best, so nice to have her.
And I'll just say, the way it's structured, we have, you know, shared drives, we have, we can, if individuals can't attend, there are ways for them to join the meeting electronically, so the organization of the entire process, I can't say enough about Kathy and the rest of the staff here and the work that they're doing to help.
Help us. And having 40 people on a task force is astounding. I know those of us that teach, have taught classes or been administrators, 40 faculty members was a lot for me to contend with, and it's a great organization with very diversity, and I'm certain you don't all agree on everything, right?
That's correct, I mean, there's...
We wouldn't be educators if that were true.
There is time for, for debate, but they are, the 41 are divided up into those subcommittees that are in, maybe elementary, we may have a group with middle school, we may have a high school group, so that most of the time, they're broken up into smaller subcommittee groups, but there is some lively discussion with that, and, and we have to recognize, and we did share this with the committee, we have to recognize that, and they go through with great effort, looking at each word that we put in the standards, because we understand the power that each word has in, in that document, and understanding also that we have a lot of teachers over the last few years that, that have left the profession, so we're getting new teachers in, we're getting more and more teachers that are coming in that have the four-year degree but may not have the education pedagogy to go along with that. So we're, we're trying to write this in a manner that practitioners can understand as well as inexperienced educators can understand, but at the same time, make sure that we keep the standard moving in, in a more challenging direction. We realize we've got to increase the rigor of the work that we're doing, and so that's part of the work as well.
Dr. Coe, Alabama is fortunate to have you, and part of what I'm asking is not questioning you, but part of our role, all of our role as educators, is to help the public know that we are diligent, we're considerate, we're concerned, and we don't make capricious decisions, and that's part of what we are, and I don't want to interrupt, but board members, you have questions?
I do.
I'm sorry, Ms. West asked first, do you mind if she goes first?
Oh, I didn't hear, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
She just tugged on my sleeve first.
Well, I wrote it, I threw something at you.
I've been throwing that before, ma'am.
You did mention about August that they were going, I would like, just so that everybody who's listening in and understands, how are you going to roll that out? Because as you well know, a lot of our citizenry and our, our public, and as well they should, are very interested and want to know, so I want them to be aware of their rolling out and where to go, how to review them, how to respond, please.
Sure, Kathy.
Kathy?
We, we always have a media release from this building also. We have the, the courses of study members will, will publicize that as well. We have a number of expert reviewers who have been identified with specific content knowledge that will be doing an, an expert review on the site as well, but I have been known to put that on, on, on social media. I, I publicize it with anyone that I can, and we have sent it out to curriculum directors as well, so there will be a media release, yes, professional, professional associations as well.
So school superintendents will be making this presentation as well as we move forward, and I can communicate that to superintendents where they can be shared, it like us, we'll be sharing this on our website as well, so most of that will come through electronic form or social media, but we will.
And we work through our related association, School Board Association, and to, and, and the media. Trish Crane is here, we would not ever want to overlook the importance of the media and house getting our message out. Thank you. Did that answer your question?
It did.
Do you have another question?
No.
Ms. West?
Yes, so back to the work itself, specifically in two of your grade bands, you said one grade band is kindergarten through second grade, and I know that you are keenly aware of the Literacy Act and the Numeracy Act and the parameters in which we have to work to adhere to the law. Is your, are your professionals that are working on this task force integrating literacy and numeracy into the science standards, and are you working with Dr. Karen Anderson and Mrs. Bonnie Short to make certain that, that we're covering those important areas that we're all focused in right now?
All of the, all of the legislative acts, including the Literacy Act and the Numeracy Act, are being considered and, and integrated into that, and as far as Ms. Short goes, Bonnie, do we have any plans?
That, we, we will work to do that.
We haven't done that yet, but that's...
We, we have to have something put in the read.
I think based on last month's deep dive into what the department is doing, not only for our priority schools, but for all of our schools, I think it's very important that when writing any course of study or addressing any standards, that we make certain that our children in the K2 are receiving as much attention that these standards would give a great deal of attention to what our expectations are for them in terms of reading and being able to do basic math. My second question is that, our second grade band is possibly 6A, but I'm thinking around the 9, 12 grade band. Are we having discussions around the standard, in the standards around our career in technical education, making certain that in those grades that we are working with Dr. Hull, I don't know if he's here today, but that, that all of the opportunities that our children have before them, our students have before them, are discussed in their science courses?
That's something, again, as we, we're still in the writing phase of that.
Right.
So I think as we get to a point, like in August, when we have that public review start, that's going to be the point where we want to get those folks involved at that point. Right now, we really don't have enough for them to review yet, we're still writing, but as we, as we progress forward and, and move forward, I think it isn't critical that we do involve those. We'll make sure that happens.
You're right.
One more thing, there was a meeting between, the health science is also developing the courses study this, this cycle, so they, they are writing standards, and there have already been discussions between the high school science and the health science to possibly collaborate on a course. So we have had some conversations between those two groups in the meetings since they were here on the same days.
Well, Dr. Chestnut and I have had many conversations about how our districts, how our two districts, and I know everyone has this, but we've got some schools where there are very few opportunities for children to explore, students to explore careers after high school. And so I'm, I'm excited to hear that these discussions are going to, that we're going to try to integrate these things, because we want our high school students, no matter where they live, to have opportunities to at least explore, and I think science is a great vehicle for that. So thank you for taking my questions.
Are there other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Would you tell me which high school courses you're working on?
High school courses, there are physical science, biology, chemistry, environmental science.
Okay, that's it, I didn't pick chemistry, so that's it.
All the science courses in the curriculum.
Anatomy and physiology.
Well, your job is done. I've done it, and it is a lot, and really, I think all the courses of study include a career section or opportunities to explore careers in that subject.
And the challenging thing is, and we know that by the time some of these children work through elementary and graduate, jobs, the jobs that they'll attain don't exist, so we have to be as forward thinking as possible.
I might just change down the chemistry word.
Ms. Manny is very, going to make certain her questions gets answered, and that's my job to make sure she gets asked. Are there other questions of the board members?
Thank you so much.
I don't want to call the rule, but thank you very much, very much, Dr. Coe.
Bye, Dr. Coe.
Good luck. Dr. Mackey, the next item I see is the A-CAP, some of the schools reading the subtests.
Yes, sir, it's the reading subtest, not sure who else is presenting on that, Maggie Hicks must be, she's coming up here now. We, as Ms. Hicks makes her way, let me say one more thing for Dr. Coe, we do really appreciate him doing this, you know, superintendents don't have extra time, and his willingness to be able to drive back and forth up here, he's been one of the most involved chairs we've ever had. There is a long line of really good people doing, chairing science, he's doing it, of course, this year, Dr. Daniel Boyd, you all know well, Daniel did it the last time, and so it's, we, there's a long history of really good people standing up to, to chair science, and I think that's, as a former science teacher, I really appreciate that, because I think we've had some of our, some of our, you know, best thinking about course to study and all when we do science, so we appreciate that. And I don't know if he can stay, I hope he can stay and have lunch with us, maybe he can, if he can stay for lunch. And he puts on also one of the best professional development meetings in the state, they feel the Dothen Civic Center, I went down last year, and it's, it's like being at a rock concert slash, I don't know, Ms. West, when, it's just unreal, all the teachers come from Dothen, Houston County, Henry County, right? And it's really, really good, just a high interview celebration of teaching to kick off the year, and I'm sure they'll be doing it again, so.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. He's a science teacher, yesterday he was an FFA person, so he's a diverse, everything he has a different identity. Thank you, Dr. Mackey, we will now proceed with the A-CAP program.
So you're, if you're on assembly, I know somebody, this morning you had the other presentation, the one we sent out last week, there is an updated one that has the updated information, the updated information's in your notebook, so you have a hard copy, but Ms. Nora, here she comes back in, she went up to, to put up the new, the updated one in assembly too, so just so you know, it, I don't know how quickly it uploaded, I haven't checked it again, but...
It's in there.
Okay, it's in there now, so you'll be able to see that, but you do have a hard copy too.
Yes.
As I, before I turn it over to Ms. Hicks, just a quick summary, I don't want to steal her presentation, but of course, we just finished the A-CAP testing. It has gone, this is the third year, should have been the fourth year, but of course, we skipped one year. This is, it's gone remarkably well. We, we had a day, I'm sure there were other glitches along the way, we had a school, I know that had some issues, they had some power issues, and of course, you know, when you're doing online testing, you have power issues, that's a problem, but we were able to get that fixed and move on, so all, all our schools were able to finish testing on time, and we were able to get scores back really early. So we're out, we have back, what you see today are second and third grade reading scores. Just to remind everybody, not the ELA, because we test bigger, wider range, and some of those questions have to be read by a human being and scored, and then the math, and those will be back later in the summer, but they'll still be back, districts are going to get those by, I'll say a date, but early July, whereas they used to not get them until the end of August or September. So we have really worked with the A-CAP to make sure that we, we get things back to districts as quickly as possible. These data districts have had for a couple of weeks, but they will become public after today's meeting. This will be the earliest, the earliest we have ever released test scores, ever, and so as you may know, many states, I, I checked, and I'm just going to brag on our staff, because last year in November, November, there were still, I think half the states had not released their test scores from the previous April, and we are, so we're, we're quick about getting things out. Now that makes a lot of the people in this room very nervous, because they want to triple and quadruple check everything and make sure it's right, and I understand that, and we need to do that. So what we'll see released publicly today are these statewide results, but we will not be down to the nth degree of all the subgroups, because we want to make sure everything's exactly right before you get down to the smallest degree. But even if a child here or there, if something is wrong and has to be changed, it's not going to change that overall big number. So you'll see that big number today, and you're going to get probably, Ms. Hicks, this might, don't pass out now, but you're probably going to get like two more presentations in the next couple of months, because we're going to be reading today, we'll come back and do math in the rest of ELA, maybe in July, but it could be August before we get that. She's nodding her head, so maybe we better do that July.
That's on our plans.
Okay. So you'll get, you'll get more and more of these things, and these could have been, we, I know we've got folks who wanted to see them earlier, but we made a commitment, we would not release them to the public until the board got to see them, and so they've only been available for a couple of days, and I said holler them to the 8th, because we want the board to see them first, but of course, they went to the districts again a couple of weeks ago. So with that setup of the kind of the process, turn it over to Maggie Hicks, who leads all of our assessment work and does a masterful job. She came to us, I don't know how many years she's been at the department, I know she's a principal in Chilton County before that.
Yes.
And she's a master educator.
Well, thank you.
And one of the calmest souls, I'm telling you what, if I'm ever in an earthquake or tornado, I want her right beside me to hold my hand, because nothing upsets her.
No, not really.
No, not really. Not really. You all will not see it, that's for sure.
Thank you for coming, Mrs. Hicks. Please.
Thank you all for having me. Again, it is a little stressful this time of the year for us, but we know that we want to make sure that we give the districts what they need because they can't go and get ready for the upcoming school year until they have their data because that's what drives instruction. So we know that this is the third year that we've completed this test, our A-CAP summative assessment. And then, of course, with the Literacy Act, we had to pull out the reading. So the reading tests for grades two and three, as we all know, are subsets of English language arts. Then in the summer, we have what is called an A-CAP supplemental reading task that will be administered. We have two windows in June and July for those students that did not meet, or that were below grade level that could be offered at that time. So in twenty-three, this year, the tasks have been updated to reflect the twenty-one ELA Alabama courses of standards. I told Chanfield, as a good segue into this, when Dr. Coe was talking about the science standards. So anytime there is a change to the standards, we have to evaluate the assessment. And so that's what we're gonna talk about a little bit later as well. Well, here, because these do reflect, this stuff, this year does reflect our updated twenty-one ELA course of study standards. So in order to meet the science of reading and the new standards that are, we, we have a comparison here of our twenty-two assessments to our twenty-three assessments, which would be the twenty-sixteen standards compared to our twenty-one standards. So you will see, as Bonnie has informed me, that she refers to the new one, the phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, vocabulary and reading comprehension. The, the big five, I think is what you refer to them, Bonnie. Very good. Okay, so we've had to add some of those because the standards changed. And so we were able to incorporate those within the assessment this year. So this year was the first year that they were able to, we were able to measure those. Of course, we have field tests the year before, which we always have a field test. The year before, the assessment becomes fully operational. So this year is the full implementation of the operational assessment. So we do that also for third grade. We look at the course of study, the twenty-sixteen course of study. We look at it for twenty-two compared to our twenty-twenty-one course of study that was administered this year. So you see those additional with the highlighted words, or the highlighted, like phonological awareness, phonic.
Big five.
Yes, the big five, thank you, yes. So those were incorporated within our, our assessment this year. I just wanted to give you a note. You all saw this last year. These would, this would be the results from twenty-one, twenty-two that were strictly aligned to the twenty-six ELA courses of study. And of course, we said that the, the information was gonna be embargoed till today. It will go out later today. That will be posted on our website, both second and third grade, for those districts to be able to look at statewide. But you all have this year's ELA, our reading subtest scores. We tested roughly around fifty-three thousand students in each grade level. And you'll see the percentage of students that are above grade level and those that are below grade level.
If I remember the two, the number below grade level increased as a percent.
Yes. We go back to the twenty-two.
The percentage below grade level increased from twenty-two to twenty-four in grade three. And from twenty to twenty-one, the twenty-three data is not that.
Oh, okay. She got gathered yet.
She was there, she went back.
She hasn't gathered yet.
She was there and went back.
I went back, and so this is the twenty, our twenty-three data.
Not in there.
Ms. Nora, it's in your book. I have it. It's in there, okay, sorry.
It wasn't in this extra, last one you gave me. That's okay. It's in the envelope. I have it. That's fine. Okay. Thanks, I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem at all.
Ms. Clarity, I'm just.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
So again, we, we tested roughly about fifty-three thousand in both grade levels. So that is our percentage. And this is with the twenty-one ELA course of study standards. And anytime we have a change in the course of study, it's going to change the test items. It's gonna change the administrative, the test items.
So if I can add a little bit to that. And now you're compiling your questions, I know. And all the questions don't have to be asked today, obviously. This will be, this is ongoing. So we, testing the new standards, which are much more intensely focused on the science of reading than the other standards. So it's a, that, you know, we, we're, we're already, I've spent a lot of time with these men and women the last few days, looking at trying to already assess what's going on. So overall, as Dr. Reynolds pointed out, we went from, you know, twenty, what, I can't.
Twenty-two.
Twenty went, twenty percent below grade level. It was twenty-three, then it dropped. When I looked at the third grade, it was twenty-three percent. It dropped to twenty-two percent. Now it's back up to twenty-four. So it's still in that same range, three years in a row, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. But obviously, it's not going the direction we want because last year, we felt really good that we'd moved one point the other way. So a couple of things here we need to realize. One is that it is different test items. So you've got some, this was the first year, the teachers had to transition to the twenty-one data, and we tested it, the twenty-one standards. They look at those schools, some of them may not have transitioned as quickly and as well as we hoped. So we gotta, you know, that's why we have regional ARI specialists. They are already digging deep into, looking at those schools individually. And we'll be obviously following up with them. And they've already started following up. You, you got a second issue, and that is, remember, last year and even this spring, we've had a very long, prolonged discussion between this board, the literacy task force, and the textbook committee about the K-three reading books, reading resources. So last year, when we, when you approved the ELA books, but not, and then, remember, we did not do the reading until this year because we asked the task force to go back and re-review that. So one of the things, and please understand what I'm saying, no cash, no aspersions toward anybody, but it took time. So a lot of districts did not order books until May, and they didn't arrive until November. So new thing, you know, a new set of standards, and I don't have a book aligned to those standards to teach with until November. And that test comes in April. So that is one issue. And we're actually specifically looking at which books, which schools ordered, and how late did they arrive. So there, again, ARI is already digging into that to see what kind of comparisons there are. The third one is, and we want to be real cautious about this, which book did they use? So we know that there were two books that now are approved by this board. But last year, those two books, you know, only one was approved by the task force. Well, actually, two were approved by the task force, but only one met the copyright criteria to be considered by the textbook committee, and so there was that issue. But some of them went ahead and ordered. Some of them ordered Amplify, some of them ordered Open Court, some ordered something else through the local process. So we're looking at which books did they use. But that won't be something we're gonna publicly post right now because, one, we don't want to attack, to say, oh, that was not a good textbook when they didn't get the textbook till November. We can't make those kind of judgments this early. But with another year, we'll be able to start saying a little more about which material they're using and how well those align to the standards. So that's a third, second thing that we're really looking at. And then the third one, and this is the one that breaks my heart and, and everybody in the room. These are the students, third graders, that did not finish their kindergarten year because we didn't have school the last two months. And many of them, their first grade year was absolute chaos. They, their schools may have been remote. You remember, we were setting up school buses with Wi-Fi so their parents could drive them to a parking lot, a host office parking lot, to do lessons online. And that went in many districts. That continued for a whole year. And those children were in first grade. And we were all saying then, round this table, that nothing replaces a teacher in a classroom. And that these, these children, as hard as our teachers are trying, these children are gonna have issues to deal with. And so now they're in third grade, and you, even though statewide, you see there's a drop of a couple of points, you're gonna see that some schools, I talked to a superintendent this morning, ninety-six percent they're third graders or second graders or something. I'll write that one down, you know. And you've got, we've got schools that are at fifty. And they, and so, so it's, when you look school to school, you got significant issues, especially, I don't wanna just blame it on that, but, but more especially in those communities that had a hard time getting connectivity and may have been online during that first grade year. The good news, it's always good news. So if you look at those second graders, these are children who had a very disruptive kindergarten year. But then by their first grade year, they were beginning, we were beginning to get back to normal. And then their second grade years, I mentioned this morning, we had no COVID closures. So, and it's better. So we're in hopes that, now we gotta do some intensive summer school with these folks. That's why the districts already have the data. And then next year, in school, after school, another year of summer school. And hopefully, we will see that number continue to decline below the twenty percent level. But that's, that's the good news is, I hope, and then next year, we'll see, for the first, we'll have another group. And then it'll be two years before we'll have a group of children who are tested who were kind of the pre, the post-COVID students that came back to us after. Another thing I'm gonna point out is these kids that are in third grade that are not on grade level. Of course, they, now, some of them may be retained anyway. The state retention law is not in place. But that doesn't mean they can't be retained. Some of these students will be because they don't meet the standard at their school.
When is the state retention, not to interrupt, I think, Clarity, when is the state retention?
State retention is next year, next year. So these students you see in second grade.
Incoming third graders.
Incoming third graders. So the ones we tested in second grade this year, they'll be next year's third graders. They're where the first ones, the retention act applies to.
So whenever this year starts, actually, this year starts for some of us now.
This new school year.
Yes, yeah.
It'll be in place, the new school year. These students who are in third grade that'll be moving on, as you know, we've had a, we have a small pilot program because ARI by law is not allowed to work beyond third grade. But we are working through instructional services. Mr. Stevens back there, working, obviously, with our ARI staff for trying to build supports for middle schools, intermediate middle schools for these students. So don't think they're, you know, oh, they moved on, if they, if they're not reading on grade level, too bad for them. We're not, we obviously don't have that attitude. Staff are working very hard about supporting those middle-level teachers too, who are getting students now that struggle to read. And so we gotta continue to do that. They can spend lots of extra funds out there. And that's one of the areas where we've told them, really focus, please, on intermediary, intermediate and middle grades to make sure these students are being caught up. They can get tutoring. They can do after school. They can do additional summer school programs. So, but, but those are students that I'm really worried about, y'all are really worried about because they're moving on through school, but they still are gonna need some strong supports. But Maggie, I'll go back to you, but I want you to point that out about those, what we see in those data. We'll keep breaking them down.
I have one question, just to be sure. Because I know if you see it in, but in isolation, is that just the subtest?
That's just the subtest. That's just reading we have pulled from the ELA. That's all that is.
I just want, I thought so, but it didn't really.
Because, because it says the ELA courses of study because that is including reading. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make another observation. The old statistician in me, in the three years of data we show, you show a higher percentage of, of not grade level in the third grade than the second grade in all three years. So if we look and project twenty-one percent, which is twenty-four, in second, third grade, well, you have some factors that you elucidated that contribute to that. If we look at that twenty-one percent with a projection of being higher, probably higher, we face a higher twenty-two, twenty-three percent of the twenty-three, twenty-four third graders who may not be proficient. Is that, am I totally elusive?
No, no, I mean, that's certainly something we have to be concerned about. If you look back on the slide before, if you go back to the slide before, one of the things I think that's, is telling, so if you look at twenty-one, second graders, twenty-two percent below grade level. Look at those same kids the next year, twenty-two percent. So they didn't change up or down. They, and so there's some, you know, those, so those are, that's the only group that we have, that we can see over time. So we see they were twenty-two percent one year, twenty-two percent the next year. So now, that doesn't mean that some, some kids got better, some kids may got worse, some kids moved out of state, came in. But overall, they stayed steady. Obviously, that's not what we want. We gotta, you wanna cut that number down. So if you look at the next slide, that number, and that's why I was saying I see some bright light because in those second graders went, they were twenty-two percent below grade level. In third grade, they were twenty-two percent below grade level. But this year's group, we see the second graders are only twenty-one percent below grade level. So if that same trend continues, next year, our third grade would drop from twenty-four to twenty-one. My hope is that it drops from twenty-four to below twenty. And we see, you know, some remarkable growth in this next year. And I, and y'all, that's the hope of everybody in this room and that, and every person who teaches third grade. But it's gonna take more than hope. It's gonna take some digging, and it's gonna make, parents gotta bring those students to summer program this year. You know, that was one of our biggest issues last summer is we offered these great summer intervention programs, and only half of the students who qualified came.
And it also means our fourth grade teachers who receive these twenty-three percent non-performing third graders have got a greater challenge.
That's right.
I've often reacted to the position of what the fourth grade teachers who receive these students have to do because the decline in competency doesn't necessarily increase.
Right.
It actually falls off year to year.
I would like to know, though, when the time permits, when it's appropriate. I would like to know who the highest performing districts were with the most diverse students, what books they were using. Does that, does my question make sense? I mean, I think if you can afford to buy anything that you want and put any amount of money and resources in the classroom, that's one thing. But if you're high performing and you have a diverse group of students, what books were used and what training was used to prepare those teachers in those lower grade levels? I mean, I, I think that we've got to drill down into that.
I get the instructional piece now.
We have done some very early preliminary data that we need to dig deeper into. But as we looked at different districts that made significant impact, we had varied programming, varied, varied programming in core, in assessment and intervention. What was not varied was professional learning. We saw more, in the ones that had the greatest growths, they were more invested in the professional learning of letters.
So letters is what we specifically looked at. It's the professional learning that the teachers are doing.
Was it a higher number?
That was.
Now, that's initial data that I'm looking at. We're really looking at, you know, just the districts and real quick, you know, taking that gathering. We looked at districts that improved five points or more.
Well, that was my question, in addition to what Tracy was saying. You know, do you see a trend with the number of teachers that were trained in the science of reading with the results in the students? Are you all planning to look at that when you analyze the data?
That was the one piece we saw that was a commonality.
So with that being said.
With one outlier.
Okay. If, if that's the case, if we're seeing that the difference links back to the teachers having the knowledge of the science of reading, then what's the plan to ensure that every kid, regardless of where they are, are being taught by a teacher that has been trained in the science of reading? Because we have a law where we are holding children but teachers have the option of whether or not they're going to become trained in the science of reading. It seems to be a conflict. You know, we, we wanna make sure that. It seems to be a conflict, you know, we, we want to make sure that.
And I think it's important to note, too, that we've got districts that are not performing as well that have been trained in the science of reading. But it's all about what you do with it. And so, that's where our coaching, I think, is so valuable. We also looked at LS one, LS two, full support of the districts that we're seeing the greatest growth in. We saw, now, there's different numbers on that, but we saw a lot of increase in LS one. We saw of the ones that increased in both second and third grade, we saw a lot of increase in full support. We're talking about districts, not individual schools, so that looks different.
So, do you see a breakdown?
I'm sorry, go on.
Do you see a breakdown when you're looking from district to district? You know, what we, we've got to make sure that what the teachers are being asked to do aligns with the literacy law, you know? Are they being asked to do something that's different, but yet, I mean, we've got to have some cohesiveness from the top down. I, I guess that's my question.
So, I have, I have a regional, I have two regional staff members, a leadership and a literacy specialist, that have been working right now on professional development. That is, I have my A-CAP data now, because we want to make sure we're focusing really hard on those second grade students, that we're, make sure we're providing all of those structures to make sure that they're making as much progress as necessary. So, on June twenty-first, in the afternoon, we're going to be doing a professional learning by science of reading, we'll record it, we'll be able to allow districts that have the opportunity. Most of them do the summer reading camp in the morning, so that will be available to them. But if they can attend, it'll be recorded so that they can see it. So, it's going to be a first step start at doing that. And of course, with your regional specialists digging deep into that data, it's going to be important, because there's going to be some nuances, looking at the individual big five element. How are you doing on phonological awareness? Was that your weakness? How are you doing on comprehension? Was that your weakness? The course of study is really playing a lot into what I'm seeing with regard to the data. I think it's a big factor, because we're looking at a standard where in 2021, we have demonstrated advanced phonemic awareness skills in spoken words. And there are five different pieces of that. And the matching standard in second gra, in second grade on phonological awareness in the old course of study is nonexistent. There's nothing in there that compares to that. So, we're looking at different pieces here when we're looking at the, the different years of testing. So, this is going to be more indicative of what we're seeing with regard to the science of reading. And digging into those big five are going to be really big at individual school and district levels.
Thank you, Ms. Short. I think Dr. Mr. Anderson had a question.
You can go on, I'm pondering something.
The numbers for, the percentages for second and third grade in twenty.
Three.
In twenty-three do not include the test data from this summer.
Correct.
How much do we expect historically? How mu, how many percentage points do you think we will go down in second and third grade?
I'm not sure, but I can get that to you from last year. If you all would like that, we can look at that to see.
Because, go back to those other slides. Those numbers right there include what students did, how they all performed after this chance to take the test again, correct?
No, this is pre-test. I can give you an estimate on that. I only estimate things Maggie wants to get them right. But if you look at those third graders last year, so twenty-two percent below grade level, we offered summer reading camp, they, which is not required by law. I mean, we can't require students to go to summer school, we strongly encourage it. Half the students, essentially half the students who qualified, so that'd be eleven percent, went. We retested them at the end of that, of the ones who went, half were proficient or were grade level at the end of that. So, so that number would have gone essentially from twenty-two percent to twenty, down, not, I'm not, not up, down to, I guess, about sixteen, about sixteen percent. If, if you carry that out, and you would think, well, if all the kids had gone, then that would have pushed it down to about twelve percent. Now, there's, there's a big assumption in there, because it could be that the kids whose parents didn't take them to summer also have more challenges. So, it wouldn't necessarily hold. The, if I may, carry your question just a little further and tie it in with Dr. Chestnut's question. So, a big piece here for both children and adults is how do you get them to take advantage of these things? You know, we're paying a stipend for teachers, I just signed this morning a memo that the checks are going to go out to districts to pay for those who've completed letters. We're, now, we're not only paying the stipend to the teachers, we've picked up, we're going to pay the benefits and the taxes and all too, so the districts are out nothing. So, that's good, but we still have the districts that aren't taking as much advantage of it as others, there are reasons for that. But we need to, you know, we'll be following up with each of those superintendents. I can assure you of that. We have a, Mr. Martin's working on that for me. We, we're part of our accountability, unofficial stuff, we've got a group of retired superintendents who are coming back to work with us on helping, really helping new superintendents, helping them with a lot of different things. But one of the things we're going to do is follow up with superintendents, like, what, if you're, if you're here, what are you doing? When you've got these resources available, you've got to take advantage of them to help them on that end. And of course, at the school level, we're pushing those principles. You've got to get your teachers enrolled. Now, I don't, I know there's lots of challenges with that, because you may have teachers, if you're changing teachers on a regular basis, it's about did they ever finish the course and that kind of thing. But it's the same way with the, the students. Y'all have heard me tell this story, so I'll tell it in thirty seconds. But visiting an elementary school last year that offered a great summer program, and then there weren't any, there were very few kids there, because they couldn't get the parents to bring the kids in for a summer program. So, that's another thing we are, we're challenged with. And, and unfortunately, it's exactly opposite of what you want. So, the most under-resourced communities where we go in and offer things are often also the time, the places where parents don't make that extra effort to get their students there, and they're the students that most need it.
Or don't have the capability.
But we'll, or don't have the capability. Now, we even, we can pay for summer busing. We're adding busing, we have added busing for summer camp, we, we can pay for that out of ARI funds. Now, we can pay for it out of federal funds for one more, this summer and one more summer, we'll have extra funds available for that. So, and I don't know if they've gotten, you know, more requests for their summer's group, but I can tell you, we do have a lot of principals who are out shaking the trees to get people out to, one, to get teachers to, who are willing to teach the summer program, and to get the students too. But both of those, I, I think your questions, Ms. Manning and Dr. Chestnut, they're, they have the same root. It's like, how do, we've got all this stuff available, and if we can't, we can't force people to do it, but how do we entice people to do this? Of course, a big enticement next year will be the law.
Yes, don't you think with the retention coming up, those parents will understand they bet this is being proactive?
Yes.
For those third grader, or no, yeah, third grader.
Well, I certainly think we'll have a lot of, when, when a letter goes out next year and says your child's going to be retained unless they come to summer.
No, I mean, it'd be more important to be this year than they attend.
This year's, right.
So, that could be a very, that carrot dangling.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope you're right.
One thing that I heard you, as you're talking about the ones that performed high, it looks like you've identified four variables. The first one was the teachers that have been trained in the science of reading. That was one indicator. The second variable, the resources that districts used may have been a variable. The third thing you mentioned, even though some teachers have been trained in the science of reading, the students did not do well. So, I'm looking at that in terms to the leadership. Okay, so, as you go further, looking at the data, I think there will be some analysis that you can make in line with that, based upon what you said. Those who were trained, the resources they used, those who have been trained and the students still did not do well, and then the leadership of what's going on. It kind of ties into what you say, but I was sitting here trying to put all of that together based upon what I've heard. So, it looks like you may have some of that over there.
I just, I feel like you're just setting me up.
Oh.
Setting up the tea for me.
Okay.
So, you know, just kind of talking to some of our regional staff to say, what significant gain in this school, what are you seeing that's making that difference? And some of this information came directly from school leadership, you know, inside the school. Some of it was from regional staff. But change in district leadership with a superintendent setting the stage for success by casting a vision and setting expectations, principals getting on board and being a learner, a new local reading specialist who is knowledgeable and coaching in the classrooms, teachers who are on board to learn and grow, walked through each other's classrooms and looked at effective literacy practices, collective efficacy, principal on board and being a learner, superintendent support, involved leadership, collaborative planning, leadership being open to listening to suggestions and being willing to initiate change.
In line with that, with what Dr. Matthew was saying with Mr. Marco, for those new superintendents, I think going, if we see that those districts did not perform well, they perhaps are not just, you know, in tune or have the competency level to understand. So, you're working on the leadership, and then down to the principals. But I think analysis can be made to look at those that are not performing based upon those four indicators. So, I'd like to see how that comes up, if you would be able to present that. Everything that you're saying ties into that.
And I do hope our deans of our colleges of education will pick up on this information and understand those teacher candidates that they're preparing need to be aware. Letters is, is real, it's working, and we need them to implement this if they possibly can as part of their, the work that they're doing with these teacher candidates. I understand that they, the conversation is that they haven't gotten experience yet in the classroom, and we need them, you know, to gain some experience, maybe before they're introduced to letters and that sort of thing. But we don't have time.
The kids don't have time.
Right, we, we, this is urgent.
I definitely think it's crucial that they are on board with the science of reading and that they're providing that science of reading training.
And I would even say that Ms. Short and her team, they have been in the Birmingham area. I can speak for them, going to some of the colleges and universities, providing training for the staff, because I've gone through the big five, and we got to go back through it in the fall, looking forward to it, and our teacher candidates have also. So, they are out there beyond the school districts to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do also.
And are we going to get our own data for our district and broken down to the schools?
After the meeting.
Add your little favor, I knew.
Ms. Short, we have that part.
I thought you didn't, thank you.
So, back to my original question, if I may, not my question.
I was going to, go ahead, I'll defer always to you ladies.
You are so kind, smart. The, the scores that we have for 2023, we can expect after the summer to see that percentage drop. Historically, it has about ten percent, twelve percent after these students go through the summer programs. So, instead of having twenty-one percent in grade two, maybe we'll have ten.
No, it's, if, he said half took it and half improved. So, that means one-fourth of those improved. So, you have half of half, if I interpret what you said.
Depending on how many, some, depending on how many take it this summer, but that's right. Last year, half of them who qualified came, and of the ones who came, half were grade level at the end of summer.
Definitely.
You would assume, you know, I'll, I'll talk, Dr. Reynolds talks about looking at the statistics. So, you've got some students in there who are, they're, when you break out these raw scores on a four-hundred-point scale, they're two points away. And so, those are your students who are obviously going to have a much better chance at the end of summer of making that. Well, also, obviously, some of these students qualify with more severe disabilities, and so, we'll be looking at that from the IP issue. But it does not mean that this year, I want to be cautious, this isn't what you ask, but y'all do a great job of setting, me and Bonnie up. This does not mean if the retention law were in place today, that automatically twenty-four percent of our students would be held back. We would, that's where it'd start, and then they would have a chance to go to summer camp and possibly, you know, possibly take the second test and possibly make it. And historically, what we would see is that would drop it to below fifteen percent. And then we would obviously look at portfolios, look at the reading portfolio, and they can also, some of these students, their IP could move them forward. But you would still be looking at a number of students who would probably be behind. We have a really rigorous test, y'all. We're, of other states that have a third grade retention, this is a higher number than most, because we decided we were going to have a rigorous test that was really at grade level and not just a, you know, a number that made everything look rosy. But the same, but this is the number that our technical advisory team and our teachers, member practitioners brought y'all a number last year to, to set the cut score, believed this is the minimum that a student needs to know to be successful, minimally successful in fourth grade. Okay, so, that's, and that's, we applied that number and then looked at what the percentage was. It wasn't like we said, oh, we want the percentage to be a certain place, and then we pick a number to match that, which some states do. So, so we're, this is the true accounting of what we, where we are. But we, you know, we want it to be a lot better. And, and also, while I'm on that, if I may, there'll be, we've already had a few questions, not many, but a couple of people in the field have said, well, are you going to change the cut score this year? Well, obviously, there would not be a place to change the cut score. One, this is the first time we've tested the new standards, and we don't need to, and you typically do that for about three years before you even consider changing cut scores. So, some of our superintendents were a little worried that we would, we'd already start, you know, fooling with the cut scores and the tests and that kind of thing. That would not be my recommendation, that we would start fiddling with the cut scores at the beginning. We want to get a couple, three years of data, and then look at where we might want to to amend some of those things. But we'll make that direction.
Would you call, would I say something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Short, I appreciate your comments and your analysis. And I take from that, you know, we talk about the science of reading, like, it's empirical. You just pick two chemicals together, you get a certain reaction. But I take from your description about the factors involving principals and teachers and stuff, that there is a human factor that we have to deal with. A cultural factor, more specifically, the culture of the school led by the administrators, but also the parents and the overall environment, that doesn't necessarily change readily. And the comment about some of the parents being more aware, when they get the letter, that your child is going to be retained, some will take that much more seriously than others. Some says, that's all right, bubba, I failed the third grade, you can too. But that's a cultural modification, and that doesn't happen overnight. In spite of our legislative action and our efforts, I think are well-based, but we have to have reasonable expectations to operate within the culture, both professional and home culture that we operate in. That was my comment. Yes, ma'am.
Having watched this over many years and having seen.
They do.
I'm sorry, having watched this over many years and seeing firsthand from this standpoint what has been done, what has worked, the key ingredients have already been mentioned, and you probably watched, I'm not in agreement, in terms of the key ingredient that you start out with is leadership. And we've mentioned in the past, I've talked about schools where we have completely changed the culture of the school from within, and having been in a school before and after, and having seen that incredible change, including the changes, not just with the local superintendent, of course, support is so important there, it doesn't happen just by mandating it. The second is, as you've already mentioned, principal, which is. The second is, as you've already mentioned, principal, which is extremely important. And we again have a blue ribbon to principal here. Um, but the fact that you also have the support of the teachers and that was it with the original ARI, that was the, the key ingredient in terms of the overall success. Because each one of those teachers who 100% had to buy in in the original piloting, they also reached out to the parents. And the culture of the school was transformed, not at the top, but that was a huge part of it. But it was actually at the very, the key point where you have that connection between the leadership in the classroom and all of the training, everything had been put in place. But also that connection with the parents, bringing their children, having that excitement to bring the children into the school setting or make sure that they get there, whether it's by, you know, the transportation that we're able to provide, at least temporarily perhaps. But that was the key ingredient in the overall success. And I, you have to have the buy-in, not only at the very top, but also at the key level with the parents who become a part of that program. And so what they see for the future is not what they've experienced in terms of potential failures, which we all will experience if that's how we learn. But also ultimately the success that they see in their own children and what we ended up seeing, because we had the two-year colleges. So we actually had a lot of the GED programs that were, that's still in our department here, but were being administered on the two-year college campuses. But you saw parents going back into the school setting themselves and they were trying to do what they saw with their children. So many of the parents camp read. And so that was ultimately what produced the kind of excitement and success where I can remember a gubernatorial parade, a inaugural parade, where we had floats from all over the state. And they had, they were, they had these big signs and of course, um, the ARI was a huge part of uh, what they were promoting in their own school systems. But that was the key ingredient. And I do think that the transportation part of it is important, especially in the summer. Um, and so since we have that, it's going to take, again, buy-in at every single level uh, and that teacher connection with those parents and their children. Having seen it before, I know it can be done and you all know too. Um, and I, I know in Chilton County firsthand had some, many of the things that have been done there over the years that, um, have, are exciting. But the, the fact is that it's not just buy-in from the local, the superintendents. It's not just buy-in from the principals. It is key to have those. And that's why when I talk about teachers going into some of the most challenging areas of our state, we have to have the best teachers with the best training because it's not easy. But they're the ones that, we just have to make sure that they are properly prepared. Um, and then support them. But anyway, I just, I appreciate all that you've done and, and everything. Um, I've seen it firsthand from this standpoint, um, from the policy standpoint. And then I've witnessed it with those who've seen it every single day and that, um, is contagious. But I've also seen in Mississippi and other states where they've already preceded us and, um, and it, success has continued. They've made a few changes along the way, but it's, again, it can be done.
But I think what you shared is that everybody's got a role to play.
Yes.
You gotta play your role.
Exactly.
What is your role and how are you gonna impact people in the role that you're playing?
And not just talk about it. And not just say we're going to do it, but do it.
I appreciate so much for what you've done. And I agree with Dr. Reynolds, that when the letters go out, everyone, it will be concerned. And I think we'll see big changes at that point. It's a shame that those changes can't take place before those letters go out. But I really appreciate what you're doing and there you guess what percentage will be held back?
So none this year. Because this is not our retention here for.
Well, some maybe have that.
None for the purpose of the literacy act. Thank you. Um, but in looking at the future years, I think, I think the ALA course of study is playing a role in, um, you know, we're making a prediction about the supplemental test, but what will that look like with the new supplemental test? Cause it will be based on the new course of study. So are we gonna see different numbers there? I don't think we're steady on that to know what that's gonna look like. Um, but what I can say is we're very fortunate that our legislature was so thoughtful when they put together the literacy act, because there are so many components that can lead to a child being promoted. And where other states who have tried retention have often only had one component. And so there's many opportunities that a child can be promoted. We want them all to be promoted by this.
Yes.
That's our goal. But we have other structures in place to support children.
And the conversation need, about summer camp needs to start almost like in January. We can't wait till May and say, oh, by the way, we're gonna have, we need to be, you know, doing the conferencing, letting the parents know, oh, Johnny's slipping in this regard, but these are opportunities. We have to communicate and show them as a possibility. And don't wait for letters. I mean, a lot of times those letters are never even sent.
Exactly.
You know, it's, but people, that's what makes the difference.
I, I.
I think it goes back to what Dr. Richardson said, leadership. Because if leadership is intentional and making sure that everything proceeds as it should, we'll see change. Uh, I got a chance to witness one of my districts utilize the information from ARI. I just wanna commend you with the family and community newsletter and the information that's available. Um, got a chance, they have, I guess, they're proactive and the community has gotten involved and wrote a grant so that they could, uh, train facilitators that will in turn train parents on how to assist their children. And so we utilized the summer report, A-CAP summer report. So parents are empowered. They know that these are the areas that my child need assistance in within the big five. And to just see them manipulate the information that was shared and how they realize, hey, I don't have to be an educator to help my child. And so seeing all of that come together is encouraging. But, um, the key point is leadership. It has to start with leadership, uh, at the central office level as well as the school level. But I do just want to commend, uh, ARI for the resources that you have provided. And I know I asked you about coming and joining in with what's being done. So I think we're headed in the right direction. We may not be going as fast as we want to, but, um, I'm looking forward to seeing the data. I do have one additional question and I'm gonna be quiet for this minute. What's in place to ensure that the summer camps that are taking place? The, let me rephrase it. Are we sure that the summer camps that are in place are utilizing data and the science of reading to support what's happening during the summer camps? You know, because you can have a camp, if it's not in line with what students need, then we just, we're wasting our time. Is there something in place where they're giving guidelines? What's the process for ensuring that those camps are providing the students with the necessary strategies?
We had summer reading camp guidance that we put out around the January, February time, um, this year. You know, it's important to make sure you're setting up that structure ahead of time so that you're not just winging it as you go through a summer camp. Regional specialists are 12 months. And so the regional specialist, that is their primary responsibility during the summer, is supporting summer reading camps. Um, those that are in the lowest 5% get the most support. And those that are in the, um, LS2 area get the least amount of support. But our regional specialist, following backup with local reading specialist with principals, bringing in those conversations, doing walkthroughs in the buildings with professors to have, you know, intensive discussions. I often hear about, um, data meetings taking place in the middle of summer reading camp where they're breaking out and they're discussing progress that students have made in this week or in this week. Um, it looks different in different places, but those, um, regional specialists, I think, are very, um, helpful during that time. Local reading specialists are not 12 months. So sometimes we have schools where the local reading specialist are not involved in summer reading camp. So that was another part that we strongly encouraged with regard to, um, our curriculum instruction meetings is you need to really work to have this person be a part of summer reading camp in the role of a coach. Because some want to hire them to administer summer reading camp. Some want to hire them as a teacher because they don't have enough teachers to do so. But hiring them as a coach in the role that they have is really, um, that's gonna be advantageous.
I have a follow-up question to that. So with the camps, the evaluation component, Johnny starts here. So is there a pre-test? Then is there a formative and then a summative for us to see the progress? Where you'd be able to go and see the data to see the effectiveness of the camp?
So the early years assessment data is the data that you signed a resolution on, um, the first year that I was with, um, ARI.
So they'll do that when they start?
So they use their end of the year data.
Okay.
And then they take another assessment at the end of summer camp.
Okay.
And the goal of summer learning, and this is gonna sound crazy, but the goal is to prevent drawback. It's not necessarily that you're gonna make great gains. We don't wanna have the summer slide.
Right.
And so, um, when you look at the national research, if you can stay where you have not had that summer slide, you've had an excellent program that has taken place. Um, of course, we have a unique situation because we wanna make sure that we are drawing those students who have not demonstrated what they need to, to have the skills that they need to move forward. And so we have that greater challenge.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Board. We will now recess until one o'clock.
Food is ready. I got a message that we need to get on up there if we wanna get one, so. Perfect time.
Listen, of course.
...
My eighty-sixth year. A mood is happening. She said her cat jumped on the bed. She went into the down room and water was coming out.
Incidentally, we have to leave. Eric and I have to leave at two forty-five.
Oh, good.
Because we're going to present that certificate to Dr. Bronner in person.
That's exciting.
Use yourself to work for next Saturday here, Charles. Yes, I got.
I'm just gonna coast him.
I'm not even planning in August. You know that, don't you? I'll be at the national Vietnam Conference about this. I've been struggling at Vietnam Conference in Orlando. Carol, that's ours. Well, thank you very much. This man, we want to try to start when you get a chance.
Yes, I do.
We'll wait on you, dear.
I'm gonna call it somebody else.
It's not as bad as the government does. You see, she hits us long, long. Listen, you women give me enough.
I give you enough.
No, we have three items. More questions, resolutions, I'm gonna move to three, four, and five. Just so the participants know, at two forty-five, Dr. Mackey and I are going to leave to go and present that certificate to Dr. Bronner. He's not an easy person to meet, but he's set aside three o'clock for us to meet because after that he has to go somewhere else or do something else, and we don't ask for it. So now, we will proceed with item number three. Resolution for approval and education program at Jacksonville State. These are represented from Jacksonville State here.
Yes, Tom.
Right there.
Y'all, please come and be seated. We'll move an extra chair and let you sit up here. We like to see you here.
Use those point two right now.
Jacksonville State, of course, is Dr. Mackey's home school, and we're careful about anything that happens at Jacksonville State because he makes us well aware of that.
Thank you for having me.
The resolution for approval is an attachment to the supporting documents, and y'all proceed. Board, you board in, members having any questions?
Well, maybe they'll.
You don't want to talk about it?
Yeah, let them talk about it, please.
I'm Dr. Stacy Wolburn. I'm the interim dean. I have been at the university for two years. When I came in, Dr. Alomari, who is our math education specialist, was already working on this program, and he has done a great job, is going to be presenting to you today.
So this is a math specialist program from K four six.
Eighty-six.
Yes, and the goal of the program is to graduate math coaches and specialists to go and support our elementary teachers in the school. So we recruit elementary teachers who have at least two years of teaching experience, and we are not trying to take them away from their schools, but we advance their mathematical with the Goji kit and coaching skills, and then they can be available sources to other teachers, elementary teachers at the schools, to make sure that our students are taught well, I would say, well prepared to the elementary level. And the need for this program, first, we need to enhance our students' performance in mathematics in the state of Alabama. Second, research has found, like, elementary teachers, they don't have enough support to be well prepared to teach mathematics because they focus on variety of subjects. So this, we try to close the gap by sending these coaches to the schools, and again, they will be supporting teachers, they will be kind of actual researchers who will be collecting data in regular pace from the students, from the teachers, and take the necessary actions to support them. Of course, the kind of support can be varied from offering PD programs, like kind of quick PD programs for the teachers, helping with adopting curriculum, and any variety, like a variety of support to make sure that the teachers are on the right track with their students. We sent out a survey. We hit back from one hundred twenty participants in the survey. Ninety-five showed interest in the program, eighty showed interest in this particular program at JSU. So when we designed the program, we considered standards that are created or defined by the Association of Mathematics Teachers Education, CAE, and the National Councils of Teachers of Alabama. While we were working on the program, the Numeracy Act came out, so we revised the program, and we made sure to consider aspects that we had not considered at the beginning to meet the Numeracy Act recommendations.
I'm sorry, did you say how long of the, how long of, I mean, how many courses, the hours, how long?
Yes, yes, it's gonna be between ten to thirty-three hours.
Okay.
And the program will be completed within two years.
Two years.
We are gonna accept students through cohorts, and of course, the program includes kind of practicum and internship.
Some both of them?
So what, yes, so while they are taking these courses in the program, or in our program at JSU, we really would like for them to have the practical experience and try to start, you know, doing kind of coaching during their program.
So are you targeting current math coaches?
Elementary teachers. So we're bringing elementary teachers who have at least two years of teaching experience, and then we prepare them through the program.
Now, what is the internship going to entail? I know you said the practicum would be where they actually would get out there and do some coaching. Is the internship the same, or?
It's gonna be the same, but it's gonna be more hours with more kind of completing the teaching cycle. We were looking at the guidelines, I think, by the Alabama State Department of Education. There is a cycle, it's called coaching cycle, so we're trying to go through this cycle and try to close it through the internship that they are doing, their last service that they have to program.
Thank you.
Right, and so if I say with their practicum, that's at the beginning, and so with that coaching, what would you say is the full circle back end of their internship, they have received all aspects of that?
Okay, got you. Thank you.
And what's the degree going to be called?
A master degree.
A master.
It's a master degree that they are getting.
Sorry, I asked a many question.
Who's the doctor, why should I talk to you about it?
Master's degree in?
In education and leadership.
Education.
Okay, say that again. Class A, yes. They were asking, because they were asking, double A or class A, and it's class A.
But it's a master's degree.
Correct.
Focusing on math coaches.
Math coaches.
Talking about Jacksonville.
Did I hear you say that you serve, I just thought you know we didn't know that.
Math coaches.
A current elementary teacher.
We're not current.
We are targeting current elementary teachers and trying to recruit them for this program to prepare them and introduce them as math coaches.
What about the educators that are currently serving as math coaches?
Yeah, we are more than willing to like to have them in the program if they think they wanna persuade their degree because eventually they would have a degree in mathematics, and again, in master, in mathematics education leadership.
But some of those people perhaps already have a master's.
Right, and one of the things that hadn't been decided yet, as you know, the Numeracy Act meeting, task force, this meeting right now, one of the things that hasn't been decided, still working out many of things, as Dr. Anderson can attest to, and one of the things looking at, will those individuals that are currently math coaches need additional schooling or need some additional courses? No decision about that has been rendered yet, and so if individuals will need, this would be a viable option for them, or if they would just like to enhance their mathematical knowledge and skill set, then they can also do this program as well.
So you're still, you haven't finalized all the components of this program yet because of the Numeracy Act and other, so you're, I'm trying to understand at what point we are at the state board of approving a program that's not yet gelled, to use an accurate term.
They have completed the program. At first, they looked at the program in terms of development, in terms of what's required, one, by looking at the CAE standards, another by looking at the current standards as it relates to continuous improvement in the Educated Prep Chapter of the Administrative Code, third, by looking at the mathematics standards. They were at that process first, but then when the Numeracy Act was developed and they got an opportunity to review the Numeracy Act, then they incorporated additional elements. If you look at the resolution, this program has been examined a few times because Jacksonville has gone back and reviewed and made those changes to the program already to incorporate many of the aspects that are there in the Numeracy Act. So that has already been completed, and that last review was in May.
And I guess my question still, are you planning to provide certification options for current math coaches?
The reason that's difficult to say is because as of yet, the Numeracy Act has, the task force for Numeracy Act hasn't completed its work yet to say what will be the requirements for those individuals that are currently math coaches. So until that's it, Jacksonville wouldn't be able to even try to attempt to say what they're gonna do in terms of certifications, because we don't know what all certifications will be available for them. So they're gonna have to wait till we complete our work for them to even say that.
So with, so with math coaches to qualify for school, there'll be, it's more likely to be professional development, not a degree, same as we do with reading coaches. So we don't require, we have reading specialist degrees, but you don't have to have a reading specialist degree to be a reading coach. You do have to have a master's degree, and you have to complete the letters training. There, that task force is now trying to recommend what similar to letters could be. They probably are gonna have to have a master's degree eventually. We may end up hiring some with a bachelor's degree to start with because we've gotten so many coaches so quickly, but ideally, we'd like to have a master's degree, and it could be, obviously, this program, it might be, but, but it's, somebody pointed out, maybe it's math, some of them might already have a master's. They'll, they'll still have to do some additional PD, but one of the benefits of this program is that you're gonna have some people now who are gonna, who are gonna say, I've got a master's in elementary ed, or I've got a master's in middle school math, and I wanna be a math coach. Where, you're also gonna see these bigger districts are already doing it, they're starting to hire their math coach coordinator, because they've got twenty math coaches, and so this is gonna be a leadership program that would not only, you know, offer that school-level leadership piece, but, well, how about if you're coordinating the work of multiple math coaches? So I don't think they'll have a hard time feeling it, but, but I don't think, we don't have enough programs. We have this one, that's a little further along, one last month that y'all, or you voted on today, you had a presentation last month for a review at the University of Alabama. It's a little further behind in the approval process because they're just going into the review stage, but you're gonna have two essentially graduate-level math specialist courses. I'll be very surprised if you don't have more being developed, but there are not gonna be enough to provide us with nine hundred coaches in the next four years, which is what the law requires. But over time, I see more and more people enrolling in these courses because they see that's, if I've got an elementary certificate, and I'm a pretty good math teacher, and I wanna be a math coach, here's a program I can go to to start working on my masters, and so when a superintendent looks at that, they're gonna, even if it's not required, it's gonna be highly preferred to have this kind of reason. So hopefully, we'll see more of them being developed soon too. While I'm talking, may I ask a quick question? I know the secret straight track. Y'all could have said this because I was coming in right as you start, I apologize. Would you start accepting students this fall, or when would you plan on starting to accept students?
We would be able to accept students in the spring.
Next spring.
And you said, you said the program requires thirty hours?
Between thirty to thirty-three hours.
Okay. Can you give me, because the resolution states the innovative program will allow LEAs the option of having trained specialists recruiting mathematics education. Could you give me some examples of what types of courses you would be teaching?
So actually, we create kind of a checklist, so some of the example, like, we have courses like quantitative reasoning, and the goal of this course, like, to advance their mathematical knowledge, and according to the standards, even though that they will be coaching at the elementary level, but they must have a math knowledge that can reach the eighth grade and maybe even exceed that. So through that, we're trying to deliver, so we are delivering this math course, and from its name, it's kind of connecting math to the real world because we're trying to take the math from this abstract delivery to our students, and we're trying to, like, provide the students with a transformative experience in which we engage them in this activity, the same way that we would like for them to coach their teachers, and eventually to our students in the school to experience the math that's connected to the real world, the math that's, like, dealing with open industry rewards scenario. So this is one course from the math, from the education, for example, it's about trends and issues in mathematics education, and through this course, we would like to introduce the candidates or the students to the recent trends and issue in teaching mathematics. We would like for them to be familiar with, for example, with the National Councils of Teachers of Mathematics, and their journals, and their articles, and being able to have to have access to these sources and know where to find them and how to find them. So this is what it's about. In addition, we have kind of a practical for math coaches and action research, and in this case, we would like for them to wear the teacher hat, however, we would like for them to be more of action researchers who are collecting data in a daily or in a regular base from the students and take the necessary action needed to support their students' learning. And of course, when they collect the data, they may go back to adjust their instructions, their classroom settings, maybe adapting curriculum, and again, I think early this, this morning, there was an example about how sometimes, you know, we can provide the curriculum, however, it's up to the teacher to adapt and adjust the curriculum to make sure that this curriculum appropriate for our students. We can provide our teachers with the standards, but how we can craft and write the standards to address high level of thinking and to make these standards relevant to the student's assets, interests, culture, and background. So we would like for these coaches to have such an experience so they can deliver to their student, to their, I would say, trainees, which are the elementary teachers, and eventually impact our students' performance at the school.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? There it is.
Thank you so much.
And then it'll be on the agenda for adoption next month.
Okay, thank you so much.
With the prerogative, and I think I told y'all that Dr. Mackey has secured an appointment with Dr. Bronner for us to present that certificate to him, so he and I are leaving at two forty-five. So in order to accommodate the schedule best, we will go back and do board questions before we proceed with the presentation on math. Career tech, board questions, would have been item two, but I went ahead with the Jacksonville State people. How does it differ to them? Board questions, please. Yes, ma'am.
Well, since we were talking about, you know, education preparation and all, if, if one of the universities comes up and wants it as a ed prep program for elementary, early childhood, I am.
Come on back up, Dr. Anderson. It's a question for you.
I am, I would just, I am asking or seeking to see, I would like to know what textbooks one would be using, because to me, I think it's important that we see, well, you know, from the Barksdale report, one of the negative things was that some of the textbooks that they were using. they were using was still using the three-Qing. Well, we don't want our teachers coming to us with the outdated or um no longer researched type instruction. So you see what I'm trying to ask?
I do, and you're talking about the instructional materials that they would be utilizing.
Yes, and I'm not saying that we want the, you know, but what- what ones the- the students would be using, and I know a lot of times, when I was in class, we would use that as our, maybe our um basic, and then you might send me off on little ta- you know, other little areas, but what is that basic textbook? So any of the universities that are coming forth, my request is that they would include in their information, the textbooks being used in those classes.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that make sense?
It does, and at this point, we are not at that point with the Numeracy Task Force to say what instructional materials may be recommended. We are at that point uh with literacy, and so definitely, learning the lessons we've learned with the Literacy Act and looking at that, we will definitely carry that forth as we begin to continue with the Numeracy Task Force, so that those recommendations can be made to institutions about these awesome textbooks that have been examined in this field, that have been found to be excellent textbooks, and to have the knowledge base and demonstrations that the candidates need to be exposed to, so that they can be successful. But not being at that point, at this stage, we can't exactly say what those are, but that is something on the radar to consider.
Thank you. So how would that, so that would be, that request needs to be included when- whenever any of these um universities are putting forth that proposal, resolution.
Okay, so you'd like to know what instructional materials?
Does that all make sense?
It- it does, if I may. Uh great conversation with the Literacy Act, that's part of our work that we're doing right now with the Path Forward. Uh we have those breakout groups that we're doing uh with higher ed, the different subcommittees within our overall group that we've set goals for. And instructional materials, that's actually one of the breakout, to be able to bring back recommendations of how we can improve our program. So that's part of the larger lift of us being a part of that cohort. Uh Ms. West is with us on that as well. So we are having those deep conversations of how do we work with our higher eds in order to improve the outcome for both um elementary education and early childhood, looking at their programs across the board.
For reading and math, yeah.
And I think we would, we can certainly ask that question, and get them to provide what, you know, what materials they plan to use. We, I don't know that it would become a part of the approval resolution, because we don't approve their materials, you're just wanting more information before it's-
I want more information, because I don't wanna approve a program if they're using textbooks that are included, and I use three-Qing as an example.
Right.
But something that is not going, we, as you, I- I believe you were saying, the rigor is so important, or, you know, that we must do it, and we cannot let anything slide at this point.
Right.
So anyhow.
All I think I, just caution on that, is that like this program, you're approving, this is, it's not a course, you're approving a degree program, so it's thirty hours, thirty, so it's eleven courses, so they're gonna be, it's not gonna be like one textbook, it's gonna be probably twenty-something textbooks.
But I just-
They've pre-yeared that, and it may change through the years, yeah, they- they may change.
But I think you understand about where I'm coming, don't you?
Yes, you're speaking of the individual classes, and that's why I was stating that we're doing it with the Path Forward, this, but this particular one is really just focusing on literacy, and not getting into the whole program, as Dr. Mackey is speaking of, we're just trying to see-
We don't want them coming to us where we have to undo something.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um could I keep going, or do you wanna let down number two?
I would never stop during your progress.
I do have a question. Um Will, is Dr. Mackey, is the department going to have that summer schedule that you did last year, maybe it was the year before, where there's gonna be?
Yeah, where people can work four-ten's if they want to, and they rotate those.
When does that start? Thank you, I'm sorry.
I think it's next week, because this is a four-day week.
This, are you, we're already into?
No, well, this is a four-day week, because Monday was a holiday, so I think it starts next week, and it goes through middle of August?
End of July.
End of July.
Except for the fourth, there's a lot of-
Well, yeah, ho- Monday holiday, well, so we have four Monday holidays in the summer.
I'm telling you.
And so um there's a provision for that too, but yeah, so it's exactly like last year, very popular, and I made that announcement at the um um our- our assembly a couple of weeks ago, last week or something, I got a big ovation, I don't know, but I think people like it. So what we do, just to be a reminder, we ask everybody to work, well, and they take a personal deadline too, to essentially work on Tuesdays and Thursdays unless they take personal days, and then Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, they can work a flex schedule. Each section's in charge of setting up their schedule, so the people rotate, so, so in other words, I can't say, well, I'm taking all the Fridays, and Dr. Richardson can take off Wednesdays, I mean, we gotta rotate it, so that different people can get the prime days, and that somebody has to be working in every section every day, so everything's covered from eight to five, as we've always done. But remember, we allow people to flex from six to six, so they can come in as early as six, um and leave as late as six, so they can, that, a lot of people take advantage of that, based on their children's schedules or whatever. And in the summer, they can do four-ten's within the six to six, and each section sets up their own schedule. But the hall, but- but the department's open, and the reason I keep coming back, a lot of our district, most of our districts close on Fridays in the summer, and there's just nobody at the district office. We are open all five days, eight to five, it's just that different people can flex their schedules, so they're not here.
Is that a clarifying request?
I probably clarified it, I mean, unclarified.
I wish, I have a cross on my phone.
Tangential comments, many of our staff work a whole lot more than they have to. It's very impressive to me that I call, and some people are still here late, and sometimes I say, please go home.
But you know educators, they do that.
But that's the, I'm just commending the staff for the extra hours they put, particularly during the legislative session, some of them work tremendous hours, and I'm not singling out any particular section, but I'm looking at one of the racist forces, and they work a lot of hours, and they deserve recognition, and it's not worth a lot of money, but it's certainly something that I, we all sincerely recognize. And all of those educators work a lot more hours than the timeframe. You have other questions, ma'am? You have a question, Ms. West?
I do. Um comment first, though positive, I had a, wanna share the board, I had an executive director with one of our STCs that reached out to me this last month to share that they have a new tool to help them do their job in working with our most fragile children. Um it's called Live Binder, I believe, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Um and so she just reached out to share what great support that um her STC is receiving, and um to say thank you to the board for uh your support of specialized treatment centers that do have schools and that are taking care of very fragile um children. So I just wanted to share that with you publicly. And then my s- my question is based on last month's report, um the deep dive that we did, um and what I noticed um was, I was very pleased with the ability to pull data, I believe, Dr. Shields, anytime that you need to pull data, and just see the progress in your priority schools. Um and so I was wondering if there's a way to pull a report for the board, I would like to see um a report of the priority schools by district, and then what training that local board is receiving around the needs that they have, so-
By district, are you meaning school district or state board?
By board district.
Board district, okay.
In other words, the question in my head, as I've been processing the last month, is what are the priority schools in my district? Who are those local boards? Are, what training are they receiving, and from who at the board table? Because it occurred to me that it's one thing for the superintendent to be highly focused, and maybe that superintendent's working with the principals, but is that local board taking full opportunity for training to make better decisions at the local board table? Do they know that they are in the lowest percentile uh of performance? And are they asking at their local board table, what are we doing uh to assist our students and our parents in having our children at our summer reading programs, in utilizing our, uh all the resources that we're putting into these schools, especially those full support? Um and so I would just like to know, are the boards being trained in what? Because if I see that a board, if I see that a local school district has a priority school, and all they've been focusing on is their financial report, and not if their kids are reading or not, then we've got a- a missing link there, we've got a problem at the local board level. And we've just got to uncover, you know, what training is being done for our local school districts.
And may I add, in line with that, maybe another column, because this is something that I've been asking before the data had come out, and this makes it more clear. With those priority schools, those that are getting full support, what are we, as a state department, doing to support those schools that are being identified by districts?
Can I ask that you two get together and formulate that in the form of a question with the type of, of what you want in the various categories?
Ms. Martin got it.
Ms. Martin's already got it?
Yes, she has.
Look at her little-
She has, and if not, we'll follow up, because we've been talking.
I'm just asking that you all, that we all clarity of discussion, and Ms. Martin is very responsible, but I want us to be responsible for our student, to your behavior, Ms. Martin, in deference to her excellent attempts to provide what we want.
And she does it, but we've been talking about it, so that just made it more clear. Thank you.
Right, and in, I'm basing this out of my own local experience, in that we had annual all-board training around subject matter. Um and so I would just like the assurance that our priority schools, that those boards are doing whole-board training around literacy and numeracy. If they're not, then we need to have them do that work. I don't wanna get in their business, but they've gotta move off the priority school list. And it seems to me that the responsibility sits at that local board table with the superintendent.
And I will add, Ms. West, that um we have been working to, with AASB, to provide training to the boards, and the attendance in those training has been great, and it has been increasing each year, I know for four years now, Melissa, I think Melissa and I started it together, we tag teamed and went to their Birmingham training, and they were able to register, and their attendance has been growing, and those are the types of things that we cover. Um what does your data mean? Um what are you doing to impact literacy? What type of services are available from the department? So we have been working with them, whether all boards are attending, we have not been getting that attendance sheet to say they've been attended, but we will amp that up, and I can get information to you.
Okay, thank you. To get some clarity for that too, so we- we've had a number of full-day sessions with AASB, just like Ms. Martin mentioned, and the first two that we had, the target group were specifically our CSI district board members. Um the, we completely packed the first session that we had, so much so that they asked us to do it again, and we did another full day. So it is a full-day session, we'll really go through how to find your- your data, what does a contingency agreement plan look like, what are those quality questions that you might ask your principals and your- your teachers when you're in those schools, as well as just the nature of ESSA itself, how the schools are identified, how long, and what type of support. Be happy to share that training with you as well, so.
And we can get the signing sheets, because they registered from AASB, and that could be what we populate that column of the report with, and that would kinda let us know, uh taking advantage, and what direction we might need to go in, um considering that there probably are some that have not.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions, board members?
Yes, Dr. Reynolds. Uh I know, Mr. Markham, at the SSA meeting, and I think this was brought up perhaps early spring, some superintendents had concerns about um the ACT and the way we're using it on the report card, perhaps reconsideration being given to another assessment, or if it's the ACT, maybe have an alternative also, because in some districts, the students, perhaps, who are not going to a two-year or four-year college, don't necessarily take the ACT seriously. So of course, they're not scoring very highly, but then that penalizes them on the report card. So I just wanted to put that back out on the table, and I think we did get maybe some information from some districts. I know District Seven, uh superintendents have talked to you, and I did talk to some of District Five and some others, the ones that I represent. But that's just for reconsideration, not trying to dilute uh the use of the ACT. And in line with that, uh it was said, even if the assessments that we had perhaps would be used not just at eleventh grade, but even another grade level, but just for us to consider as a board, that, because a lot of the Ivy League institutions now are not even requiring the ACT for entrance, you know, but anyway, that's one thing. And then secondly, I'm sorry, yes.
It would be good to just survey all of it.
Right, and I know Dr. Mackey, I had talked to you, and he said that's what he was gonna do, but I just wanted to put it out to get it on the, on the record, and thank you for what you are doing to try to help them. Okay, and also, consideration of alternative pathways for the uh college career readiness indicators for special education, in reference to those areas, for us to revisit that, that that was a concern. And then uh last night, I met with Dr. Koby's class, and um two points came up in reference to parental involvement with the Literacy Act, if anything is being reviewed, and uh Ms. Ziggler, maybe you can talk on that, in reference to revision of parental involvement. I know you mentioned in some of your districts what they were doing, but all districts are not doing that. So are there any things that you're aware of in line for parents, perhaps revisions, the fact that we're not getting all parents, or a vast majority of parents to buy into in reference to the Literacy Act, are you aware of?
With the change, it didn't add any of the- the parents on there, which probably would've been a good thing, and I think, again, I don't know why we're not that good on communication. And to me, the more we involve our community and our parents and our citizenry, then that will stomp out many fires. I- I- I was shocked at how many people would send me information that was wrong, just total misinformation, that, oh, I heard my neighbor say, you know, what was it, that little whisper game we played as children? And um it is always the best thing to involve your parents. The more they know, the more you're open, if they think you're open, then they trust us, and I think we lost the trust of some of the parents. And one of the biggest parts that I came back from hearing was on the content. And there was misunderstanding about how that was supposed to come to fruition. So with that, you know, again, I- I know we talk about that, and that had to go with one of my questions about getting it out there, how are we gonna let them know about standards?
Right.
But we, it seems like we make it so difficult, they call and say, well, I know we're having it at the University of South Alabama, and I'm gonna go there and look at the books, but then if the books aren't there, or the, you know, it just seems so complicated, and I don't know how to fix it. But as long as they think it's difficult that we're putting barriers down, then they don't trust us. Is that answering sort of, and I don't know what the answer would be, but I- I think everywhere I go, even at church, what's our error, we're not communicating properly. I think we think we are, but if we always do what we've always done, we'll always get what we always have, and what are we having, parents that don't trust us.
But there was a time when that was different.
With what, trusting us?
Well, that too, was the fact that the books were there.
Oh.
And there was backup, because it's not that difficult, like you're pointing out, it's not that difficult to make sure that the books are there. I think just check and make sure that, and have locations, and get the word out, and even before we had the technology that we have now, we were able to get the word out. And I don't know why it's so much more difficult with all of the avenues that we can use.
Well, maybe we could include in the leadership professional development, the emphasis- emphasis of promoting family and community engagement. When we're preparing our leaders, as Dr. Richardson mentioned earlier, that could be one area of focus. Because if the parents are not aware, then, uh, that may be the reason why they're not sending their children in the summer. They don't see the importance of it. So if that could be included in the process of training leadership, I'd be happy.
Other questions, please?
Yes, and also, this still may be in the works, but with SB three hundred that you shared about the mentorship program that Senator Orr is gonna implement, has it been determined how those people who will be a part of that, the principals and assistant principals will be a part of that, or is it still being worked out? Still being worked out?
I will, let me make a little comment here that may preempt some more questions. Nick called me a couple of days ago and talked about some of the things that we need to discuss about the new laws. And some of the laws affect literacy and numeracy and charter schools and other things. And I just have talked to him about how to better do that. And he and I agree, and I think Dr. Matthew agrees, some of those things will require some clarification, even at the attorney general's like, level. Because there are whole tasks and whole relationships that have been modified, that we may be responsible for, but we may not be respons, be willing to do without some sort of formal memo run, understanding of clarity. So what I've asked, and Nick is gonna work with Tina and her staff to be prepared next month, issue some issues, because, as you know, the Literacy Act was changed. There are some, some dramatic changes. More specifically, the Charter Commission Act is radically changed in our role, and perhaps they've been set aside, maybe some of, the chairman of the Charter Commission called me last week, and I said, with all due respect, it hasn't been signed by the governor yet, uh, it's affected immediately, and I know there's been a, a request for somehow sixty days delay, perhaps even with the Charter Commission. Those things are yet to be resolved, and some of the questions, I would suggest we wait for some clarity, and it, beyond our work schedule agenda, under a different leadership, I'm certain, next month to discuss those laws and implications. And it gives our attorney some chance to review our roles under the guidance of the superintendent and some of the other agencies, to bring back a new reality, because we, it's, the legislature is out of session, the governor has yet to sign all the bills, unless she signs some this morning, I wouldn't know. And am I clear, am I truly representing what you suggest, Nick?
Thanks, sir.
Okay, I wanna, I don't wanna put work in this.
It's SB three hundred, I think it's the principal training bill. So what we'll be, we, we obviously, that bill's, we threw, had a lot of conversation with, uh, Senator Orr, Representative Baker. Couple of things on it. So one, the original Numeracy Act, there was a whole section on principal leadership. Senator Orr, talking to the Principal's Associations and Vic Wilson in class, he agreed it would be better to have a separate bill, to take all that leadership stuff out of the Numeracy Act. He left like four lines in there that said the State Department would work with, with, right, it was, it was odd the way it was worded, but basically just said we develop a leadership academy for principals, but there was no funding to go with it. Senator Orr told me even last, before the session started, he was gonna work, he was working with Vic on another bill and would clarify that. So it's clear in the, the new law that the, this new academy that's being developed subsumes that piece in the Numeracy Act. So that's one of the things that, when Dr. Anderson was meeting, she, I told you, I think she mentioned, you know, we put that on hold till we wake to see what happens. So that's one thing, it's important. It does say that we will work with an outside organ professional association that prepares principals or something, but it's gonna be class, and classes, the, the only ones really that qualify. And there's affiliates, and there's a, there'll be a task force that different people have appointments to, and we'll be setting that up. So essentially, it comes in three stages, and the first stage is that, um, every principal by twenty, fall of twenty-four, has to develop a personal professional learning plan. It's pretty, it's pretty simple, they already have to do that, but by doing that and implementing it, they automatically qualify for the, the bonus. But, but by some point, twenty, twenty-nine or thirty, they also, if they, if they wanna continue to get the bonus, they have to graduate from an academy that we will set up in coordination with the Principal's Association's class. And so, but what we see that calls for principal mentoring, uh, Dr. Wilson, Vic Wilson's also already working on recruiting some retired principals to be a mentor corps, and that part, we think, will be able to be rolled out in this next school year. We'll, um, we already are working with him about setting up the task force, but they are going to manage most of that work for us, and that's what Senator Orr, Representative Baker wanted. They said we want, want to not put too much more on you, we want them to manage the work, which is good for us. But we, but here at the department, that will live under Talina Madison. I don't know how many know Talina Madison, but she's been with us for a number of years, and she already oversees what we do, it's a smaller piece, obviously. Now, I talked to her briefly this week, I think she's had more in-depth conversations with Ms. Martin. We can't put all this on her, in addition to what she already does, without having to have another person. So, and we talked to Senator Orr about that very early on, we will have to have more staff to manage this academy that's gonna incorporate, you know, we have over fifteen hundred principals, and then you add twenty-two hundred, uh, or no, when you add assistant principals to it, I think it's like twenty-two hundred people. So, so we're already, have begun that process of, we're gonna have to hire another person that'll kinda manage the process, and the task force will be, it'll be the late summer when all that gets rolling. Uh, is that kind of answered on that piece where we are?
It does, it does.
But we'll work closely with them, um, not try to reinvent the wheel, but there's, there's some, there are not many states that have really done strong leadership academies for principals, so it's good, it's, this is a big opportunity for us. Legislature provided us with what, it seems like a lot, so it'd be a lot of money going to my bank account or yours, but it's not a lot, spread out across the state, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to start it. But you know, that's gotta, again, we gotta hire another person, we have to pay for all these people who come to town for meetings on, so it'll be pretty tight for the first year. But then in the fall of twenty-four, principals and assistant principals can start getting a ten thousand or five thousand dollar stipend by participating. And so it's a bit of a carrot and stick, because the carrot is to participate, and yet the law says you shall participate. So, so they, you know, if they say, well, I don't want the five thousand dollars, I'm gonna retire in two years anyway, I don't want to participate, I don't think they have that option, they're gonna participate, um, or not be principals or assistant principals, say. But, but same time, if somebody doesn't, we can't fire a principal, because they don't work for us, but we can with all their stipend. So it gives us, again, a good carrot and stick.
We can withhold it from the school system, but the school system may be.
Well, that's true, the school system always pay.
Let's be clear, what we do not pay the school system does not mean the school system does not have to come over the money themselves.
That's true, that's true.
That's what we have to.
We see money in systems.
As a, as a little, school system, I know the state used to do some things and I had to pay the money.
Yeah.
It's like when people expect the pay raise when school starts and the money didn't come to our coat rack. That's an old explanation. Other questions, please? Y'all are great. Let's go to item four.
Let me, as we, uh, I'm not sure who we've got on these career tech, these resolutions. I know a little bit about Kathy, oh, thank goodness she knows. There are some changes to a couple of career tech, come on up Kathy, career tech courses of study. My understanding, they're not overall, complete overalls, that doesn't sound right, they're not complete overalls, these are revisions to current courses of study.
They are revisions to course names within the courses of study. And so, uh, in the front of each section is a list of the changes that were made in that, um, course of study. So the first one, the first page, is architecture and construction. They had, um, some issues in the optional implementation year, which was this past school year, um, with making sure that the progressions were, were, um, were what they needed to be, so there were some changes to some prerequisites that they, they're requesting here. And also, um, the, the changing of the names will help them with their reporting for federal reporting also. So some of you who've worked in the school district know how important that is and how important it is to track the programs. So that's, um, that was the, the, the philosophy behind all of this, but in the first, um, first section is the architecture and construction, and in the second, transportation, distributional and logistics, there are more changes there than there were in the, um, architecture and construction. So this is just making the courses of study more usable for the school districts, there are no changes to any standards.
So you're dealing with both four and five, right?
Yes. Sorry, I've got ahead of you.
Well, I'm just.
So, yes, there will be two.
I'm trying to maintain some signal, some signal of what topic we're covering, we're doing four and five.
Yes.
And I thought those were great, because it's easier to understand as an administrator, if you're looking to do an audit transcript, it's easier to understand if a student is choosing a subject. I just thought they were great.
And that's where the, these suggestions came from, and, um, Lisa, um, I can't get through all this right now, but Lisa brought in the, um, the career tech committees and met with them virtually, and so this was, uh, agreed upon by the committees.
Smart move.
Any other questions on these two acts? Any other questions from the board members? Hearing none, we are.
Oh, one thing else, I was. Not a question, just a comment. Uh, we have our retreat, we're scheduled to have in August, and we're looking at a date, uh, and Ms. West, somewhere around the, uh, middle of August, and I think when we had the last one, um, we discussed perhaps going to Tuscaloosa, and so I'll be looking at exploring those avenues with the superintendents down there, not the various others.
Doesn't the governor determine, or is it us that determines the date?
We determined the, the date, the date, and then we share with Nick to see if it's okay.
So you already set a date, when you adopted the calendar in December, you set a date for it. But it's, I mean, it can be moved.
Right.
I'm looking to see what it is, but you did already set it, and we've kinda.
We set August, and then, we had always said in August, and then the other one, that would be in the spring.
I, I think it's August, I think it's August thirtieth, but I'll look.
It's August thirtieth, okay.
And it's actually in, like, it's a hill, I don't know, it's my, to have put it in the, in the bylaw.
Right, 'cause you have the right, right.
Well, actually, it was Dr. Richardson and I, Richardson and I came up with it, and it was my idea, but, because we didn't have it required, and we weren't doing it, and so when I was, Jared, the second time, that was something that was important, but it's actually set, and the first one is supposed to be at a time when we can actually look at, um, the legislative session, but the second one is, is where we're supposed to be at a point where we can, as a board, come up with our own proposals, and it's not just touring things.
Right.
We used to do that when we had the meetings out across the districts, um, and tours are fine, but they're great. But as far as our, for our benefit, it's actually good a purpose in the administrative code that we put, we voted on.
Okay.
Um, so it actually provides the basic timing and.
And, okay.
And the purpose.
It's the thirtieth, right, okay.
Appreciate it. Where they miss, take care of the task.
I was following tone, thank you.
I'll turn in a few moments. And if you don't wanna do what I wanna do.
I will do it.
We are adjourned.